Good morning. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 7, 2015. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. If you please stand.
I pledge allegiance to his life. To the republic which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical and the religious faith.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and allowing us to live in this great county. Guide us today as we make decisions for the betterment of our citizens and their families. Give us strength to move forward. Watch over our people, especially our elderly and our children. And in this time that we're going through throughout the world and here at home, please protect our trips abroad and protect those here at home who protect us. And please guide us through this violence and hatred and uncertain times that we're going through. In your name, Omen.
First item of business is a call to public hearing. I recognize Julie Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a notice of public hearing. It's in your attachment. We are getting closer to time for the installment financing to build the EMS base that we have been talking about for a number of years. We'll be bringing later on a resolution for you to approve, but in that resolution you will be adopting, will authorize the county to proceed to pay the capital costs of the construction of an emergency services base pursuant to an installment financing contract in a principal amount not to exceed $2.1 million, under which the county will make certain installment payments in order to make the project available to the county and authorize the county to proceed to provide in connection with the contract as grantor a deed of trust and security agreement on all or a portion of the real property on which the project is located, which mortgage property will be mortgaged by the county to create a lien thereon for the benefit of the entity or as it signs, providing the funds to the county under the contract. The real property is located at 141 Hemlock Street. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Sections 16820 of the General Statutes of North Carolina that on December 21, 2015, at 5:30 in the historic courtroom of the historic county courthouse, Waynesville, North Carolina, a public hearing will be conducted concerning the approval of the execution and delivery of the contract and the county's construction of the project. All interested parties are invited to present comments at the public hearing regarding the execution and delivery of the contract and project to be financed thereby.
Okay. If there's no objection, then we'll set the public hearing for December 21 at 5:30 PM in this room.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We'll move next to the public comment session. Is there anyone present who would care to address the board? Okay. Hearing none, then we'll move to constituent concerns. Bill?
Just a comment. I went down east this weekend and came back through Asheville Saturday. If we have, if we have an economic downturn, I didn't, I can't believe it. It was a parking lot, the whole, every road around Asheville full of people. So either looking or spending, we hope they spend.
Kirk?
No.
Michael? I will mention it's Kirk's birthday today, so happy birthday, Kirk.
Thank you.
We not gonna sing.
We won't. No, you don't want me singing. Okay, we'll move to administrative and agency reports. We have an update from Mountain Projects and the Senior Resource Center. We have with us Pat C. Dowling, Mountain Projects Director, and John Chacon, the Senior Services Manager. Welcome.
Thank you, and good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to talk with you, give you some updates about Mountain Projects, hopefully in your package. You got a copy of our annual report, and I'm not going to read it to you, but I just wanted to do some highlights of that report. This past year, for the year ending June 30, we successfully administered over $12 million of federal, local, and state grants. That's 52 pots of money that Mountain Projects manages. We currently have a staff of 145 employees that span eight counties. Some of the highlights of that is 193,000 meals were provided, 39,992 transportation trips, 339,000 miles with Haywood Public Transit. We've began a new group of first-time homeowners, which will be down on 209, and hopefully we'll have some more of those homeowners being cultivated this year so we can start a second group. Those folks move into those houses with an average equity of $38,000. So to give somebody a first-time home, and we really target the folks who are overqualified for Habitat but still have trouble qualifying for traditional mortgage. So hopefully we'll get that program, more folks qualified for that program. And in our Healthcare Navigator program, we assisted over 3,400 folks. And I could go on and on with the data and the numbers, but I think it says it all with the summary of our annual report, says 10,000 lives touched through Mountain Projects and through the administration of our grants. So we're pretty proud of that fact, pretty proud of the fact that we've celebrated 50 years this year, successful operations of our organization. And in this coming year, a lot of our focus is going to be on affordable housing. I've speeded this data across our county. If you look at the data for Haywood County, to afford fair market rent, if you earn a minimum wage, you have to work 2.2 jobs, which is 100 hours a week. And often we see a lot of our clients trying to work those kind of hours. So a lot of our focus is going to be seeing what we can do and building partnerships and collaboration to try to expand affordable homeownerships and rental property in our community. So that'll be a big focus in 2016, and John's got some numbers. So if you have any questions for me?
I'd like to mention I represent the board on the Board of Commissioners on the Mountain Projects Board, so I can personally attest to the positive impact that your organization has on the lives of people in Haywood County.
Thank you. John?
Good morning. I just wanted to take a moment to make sure that you guys know, or the commissioners know, what's going on at the Senior Resource Center. We're certainly busy, but you know, every time I go out into the community and go to churches and wherever I'm at in the community, I look around and I still don't know a lot of the seniors. And so I know our work is continuing, needs to continue, and is certainly important to the community, because until I can see some seniors I know wherever I go, our work is certainly not done. But just wanted to update you on what's going on. Of course, our mission statement is very simple at the Senior Resource Center, is education, services, and fun. We certainly want to keep people out of the nursing homes and in their homes as long as they can through our services. And each one of our services really touches that, to make sure that we continue to keep people in their homes, and I think that's so important. Through the education, we have classes at the Senior Resource Center all the time on different kinds of activities, and from composting to cooking classes, and we just continue to look for new kinds of things to offer. And then we, this year, we've gotten into, not to compete with the Haywood County Parks and Rec Department, but to enhance that. We've also served, do trips with the seniors, mostly three- or four-hour trips. We try to combine that with education and then a little fun also. So we're trying to do different things. We, the other day, we went up to Pisgah Inn just before it closed, and it was kind of funny. One of the ladies, she's like 91, I think, she says, "John, I don't think we can go." I said, "Why can't we?" And she goes, "I'm not going to drive up there." I said, "Well, I think I'm driving." So I say, "I don't think you got to worry about it." She went, she said, "You know, I'd never do this without you guys." So that was one of the reasons why I do it, is because those kind of comments, it shows that they enjoying themselves, even though it was raining and everything, they got out and was in the community. So that's important. Our senior leadership program continues. We graduated another eight people this year, and it was a little down this year, but we have hopefully a full class already for the, in the spring. So we're going to continue that. That's to get the seniors out and be knowledgeable about all the services in the community, so then they can become resources in the community, too. So I think that's certainly a big part of it. Our volunteers through the senior leadership program, we're over 8,000 for the year, doing many things. Whenever we go into any kind of service in the community, it seems like, they go, "You know, I connect with that." And they'll end up serving in like two or three different places. So that's really neat. It really makes a big difference. We got a couple of new employees this year. Michelle Clayder is from the newspaper. We stole her from her, them, and also Anna Rogers. She works, Anna is with our options counselor. She tries to help connect people that are going on her nursing homes to get them back in the community. Michelle Clayder takes Avon Gold's position, where she's been there forever. I shouldn't say that, forever, but she's been there for a long time. And Michelle is such a go-getter, she's really active and really has enhanced our programs, and so I appreciate that, and is really connected with the seniors. Our REACT program, which is Elder Abuse Awareness Program, which we've, were funded through the Evergreen Foundation, we continue to try to connect services for seniors that have been victims of possibly elder abuse in the community, and we have an action team that meets every month on that. Last June 15, we had a walk, Elder Abuse Awareness Walk, and we had over 100 people show up to that, so that was really neat. If you've been in our center, everybody knows Odile, and she does such a great job at the front desk. If we didn't have her, I'm not too sure what would happen. She's such a resource, and she's our information and assistance person, of course, and sends so many people to the right direction, and hopefully doesn't, you know, multiply their frustration by sending them somewhere else that they don't need to. So I, every day, I can't believe how many people she talks to and is patient with them and puts them out in the community into the right places. We've started to do outreach in the community. We just can't be in our building, I don't think. So we go to Fiennes Creek once a month on their man-a-day, and also Bethel on their man-a-day each month. And so we just hang out, let the people, it's, we've been doing it for about a year now, just hang out, and so people get to know who we are, and hopefully they'll see him and say, "Hey, you know, we go to the man-a-day," and there's a guy, you know, a guy or a gal from the Senior Resource Center might be able to help you there. So again, I helped a couple out at Fiennes Creek that I know would never come to the center, and so helped them with the extra help with SHIP. So it was kind of neat to see that. And so we continually do that. The gals are really connected, and I think they do a great job when they go out and see the people out there, and I try to do it as much as I can, too. Mark, at one of our governing council meetings, mentioned a couple, something that we thought didn't even get on our radar, but we've certainly jumped onto it and working on it, is diabetes prevention program. Most senior diabetes can be prevented by some exercise and some, just eating correctly. And so we're looking at that. We already have gone to some training down in Atlanta. It's, so we're going to do a 16-week program in the spring with that. And also, we've applied for a Ribbon of Hope grant, which will actually be able, will be able to employ a person with healthcare that can work on the diabetes also. So we're working with the hospital on that, with Cooperative Extension and others, too, to try to bring that all together. And it's a hard thing to get people in, and the hospital has already told us that, but we're going to really work on it, see what we can do and what direction. We're going to try to do some preventative kinds of programs to try to entice people to come in, and so we're going to, it's going to be interesting, I think. Another way to get people in the door, I believe. With the SHIP program, which is a senior healthcare insurance information program, up until open enrollment is October 15 to December 7. Today's the last day. I have about 15 or 20 appointments for the day. But from January 1 up to October, we served 182 people with my volunteers and I, and saved them $235,000 in prescription costs. Then during open enrollment, just open enrollment alone, we've served 370 people and saved them $439,000 in prescription costs. So it's, just one lady alone, I saved her $250,000 in prescription costs for the year. The government had put her on a plan that was not conducive with her prescriptions, and even though she had extra help, she was still going to, it cost her that much at the pharmacy. So I changed plans, ended up she's going to pay about $1,500 for the year. So a big difference. So those kind of little things really help a lot, brings a lot more people into the center, some people that may not use our services otherwise, and we can also, again, express what other programs we have at the center. We also have foster grandparents. We have about 60 people that serve about 53,000 hours in the seven western counties. We have about 55 senior companions, and the senior companions actually go into the home with seniors and, again, assist them in the programs, making sure that they have help. Our in-home program, we serve 2,397 hours of in-home service, and that is, we have four people that do that, they are employees. We are, in congregate sites, the three in the county have served over 10,000 meals for the year. So again, we're touching seniors again in that ways. The Haywood Jackson Volunteer Center, we've served about 70 new volunteers in the community this year. And last is, we, each year, we do a Christmas box program, and last year we did 300 boxes, and we're trying to get that again this year. We've have about, request for about 200 boxes right now, so we, we're getting pretty close. So we, we've got some funding from churches and everything, and the outpouring has been really great. So we'll put those together, we'll deliver those in the next couple of weeks, and so it is busy over at the Senior Resource Center. So there's more in the report, but of course, you guys can read that. So any questions?
If I have any questions?
I just want to make a comment. I noticed that the wood program-
Oh, yes.
Richard Reeves delivered 331 loads of wood for Heat the Seniors, and our family did five loads of wood and about killed me. And for them to do that is, it's phenomenal.
And Richard, I've gone out with him a couple of times, and Richard does it mostly himself. I mean, he walks out there and he'll go, "Okay, let's load the truck," and he's got it loaded more, a lot quicker than I can.
Yeah.
And then we, you know, we go out and deliver it, and he's back and delivering it again.
Yeah, that's great.
It's just unbelievable. He just keeps on trudging along, and he tells me he's going to slow down a little bit, but I hadn't seen the slow down part. So, and I mean, for, and he does have volunteers from the churches and things like that, but majority, if you see the trucks, he's always got a load on, or he's going back to the wood pile to get another one. So it's, he's, he's a tough guy.
Well, thank you, John. A lot of good work is done in Senior Resource Center and services that a lot of our citizens wouldn't otherwise have.
And we appreciate you guys' support. Really is a big help.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any adjustment to the agenda today? Okay, then if not, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the November 16, 2015 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? Hearing none, we'll move to Julie Davis with budget amendments.
Hey, Mark, while she's coming up, I just want to thank Candy for the work she does on getting the minutes out.
Yeah.
The last, this past minutes and the minutes before the other meetings when we had public hearings, she had, she put comments in from everybody, and that was a lot of work for her, and I appreciate her doing that, because that's a lot.
And I've never found a mistake yet.
Yeah.
Yep. Thanks, Candy. Okay, Julie, you're up.
A few budget amendments this morning. The first one that you have in front of you is a total of $16,957. You'll remember this probably about once a year, we have the Employment Security Commission amount that the county has to pay. Counties don't pay unemployment insurance, we pay the actual amounts, and I've brought budget amendments to you over the past few years of over $100,000. This is 16,957 out of a $17,000 bill. We actually budget most of that, and what the Employment Security Commission does now is they just subtract out the difference of what is in there according to what we have to pay. So this is significantly lower this year. What I'm doing here is, since we do budget this within the departments, I'm putting the amount into the departments that are affected by the unemployment, and then moving it out of a department that had a lot budgeted. We budget 1% of a certain percent of the salary. So the total 16,957, we're able to cover without hitting contingency.
Questions there? Okay.
The next budget amendment is actually moving between departments also. There's $32,232 worth of some technology, communications invoices that we pay in the county, and we have decided that it's more appropriate to pay for those out of the IT budget because it affects multiple departments. We had budgeted it originally in a few departments, so what I'm doing is I'm moving it out from the departments where it was budgeted into the IT department where we're paying for it. So again, this will not have to hit contingency. The next one is a closeout of a capital project. We have county facilities and repairs, and once the audit is completed, I'm trying to clean up whatever's left over in some of these capital projects and move it back into the general fund. There was $22,085 left in a fund that we had for the pigeon community center repair. We have completed all those repairs. With that amount left over, I'm taking $5,000 of that and putting it into a capital project for the animal shelter. We had budgeted $230,000 for the land purchase, and after closing costs and all that, it came in about $235,000. So I'm moving some money there to boost that up to the amount we actually had to pay. So there's $17,085 I'm able to put back into contingency in the general fund.
Okay. Any question on any of the budget amendments? Okay. Then the third item would be, Julie, as well, with a resolution. Now, Julie?
This is the resolution I mentioned this morning, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Haywood, North Carolina, authorizing the negotiation of an installment financing obligation, directing the publication of notice with respect thereto, and providing for certain other matters related thereto. And the, directing the publication, of course, is the public hearing, and I'm, it's quite long, I won't read it all, but I'm going to point out just a few things in the third paragraph, the third whereas. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the county determines that it is in the best interest of the county to enter into an installment financing contract with a financial institution to be determined to provide for the construction of an emergency medical services base on property located in the county and create a security interest in all or a portion of the real property on which the property is or will be located. And another one, a little farther down, that has the amount in here, whereas the county determines that the estimated cost of the project is an amount not to exceed $2.1 million, and that such cost of the construction of the project exceeds the amount that can be prudently raised from the currently available appropriations, unappropriated fund balances, and non-voted bonds that can be issued by the county in the current fiscal year pursuant to Article 5, Section 4 of the Constitution of the State. And I did want to point that out, it's $2.1 million, which includes some architect fees and some closing costs for the loan. Whereas, the county does not anticipate a property tax increase to pay installment payments falling due under the contract. Farther down, it talks about the public hearing, whereas a public hearing on the contract after publication of a notice with respect to such public hearing must be held, and approval of the LGC, Local Government Commission, with respect to entering the contract must be received, and we intend to apply to the LGC at their February meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the county manager and finance officer with advice from the county attorney are hereby authorized and directed to negotiate on behalf of the county for the financing of the project for a principal amount not to exceed $2.1 million under the contract entered into in accordance of the provisions of the Act, and that the finance officer is hereby directed to file with the LGC an application for approval of the contract, that the county attorney is approved as counsel, that there is a public hearing that I've mentioned, that there's notice of the public hearing going out.
Any questions there? Okay. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
All right, the last item under the consent agenda is some public health fee changes. We have Patrick Johnson, the interim public health director.
Good morning. Pardon me, I'm still getting over a little bit of a cold. I'm Patrick Johnson, I'm the interim public health services director with the Health and Human Service Agency. I have two items to bring forward to you for your consideration. The first is an increase in the vaccine, Prevnar, from $156 to $219, and that's based solely on the increase in the cost of the vaccine to us. And the second is a new service, and that is to provide resin-based partial dentures to Medicaid patients. Medicaid no longer pays for metal-based dentures, and we have a number of our dental patients waiting for this product. Medicaid pays $412 for it, and the full fee, 80% of it, that we would be, we would be offering for some of our sliding fee scale customers is $840, which is the usual and customary fees for our area.
And these were approved by the Health and Human Services Board?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Any questions of Mr. Johnson?
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
To move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If unanimous, thank you. We have no old business. We'll move to the first item of new business. Recognize Doyle Teague with a request to enter into a new memorandum of understanding with the Haywood Animal Welfare Association. Welcome, Doyle.
Good morning. Glad to be here this morning. What brings us here is we're responding to some legislative changes to the Spay Neuter program, which have changed the way that the program is administered. It has changed the income level of the folks who can participate, and it also requires that the county notify the veterinarians of their opportunity to participate in the program. This is going to update and replace the current memorandum of understanding we have in place that was signed in 2012. Haywood Spay Neuter has operated this for us, and they have done an outstanding job. So if y'all have any questions, and me or the folks from Haywood Spay Neuter are here as well.
Yes, and I believe that the other organizations, which was one of the questions that we'd had previously-
Yes.
Are in favor, is that correct?
Yes, I've spoke to the other animal welfare organizations, and they are in full favor of this.
The, of course, the memorandum of understanding is in our packet. Any questions or observations of Doyle? Strictly because of legislative changes?
Yeah, this is all, it's just a requirement in the new budget, so.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further questions, then we'd entertain a motion that the new memorandum of understanding with Haywood Animal Welfare Association and Haywood County be approved.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Well, thank you for the job you're doing.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I think Doyle has the hardest job in the county, actually.
He does.
Okay, the second item of new business, recognize Ira Dove with a request for compensation package for the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service employees.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioners, and members of the public. Yes, the General Assembly had awarded additional compensation for all state employees. We have the extension office, and several, those folks are actually the state employees. We have a memorandum of understanding as to who will pay for what portions of the salaries and compensation when it's awarded. Under this memorandum, and in reviewing it, reviewing what the General Assembly had done with $750 additional compensation, for those employees that are partially paid or fully paid by the state office in the North Carolina Extension, North Carolina State University Extension Service, the state will pick up their share of the increased compensation. There are two employees that the county is fully responsible for at, under the memorandum of agreement. of agreement, and the Extension Office of North Carolina State University and the state will not pick up the compensation, the additional compensation for those two employees. So, what we're asking for is that the compensation for two employees, and the total between the two is 1,125, it's 750 for the full-time employee, and 375 for the half-time employee be paid by the county. And this, in my opinion, if you review the memorandum, is a fair thing to do.
Any questions of Ira? Okay.
And we have the director here with us, if you have others.
Yeah, okay. Then we'll entertain a motion that the compensation package for the two North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service employees that are 100% county-funded be approved in the amount of $1,125.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Did you have anything you'd like to say?
We certainly appreciate all the support the county provides, not just for these two employees, but the whole office and for the citizens of the county. We provide informal educational opportunities and a variety of topics to them. We're involved in a number of things, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve and also the opportunity to have your support.
Thank you. We fully recognize the benefit of agriculture and related activities in Haywood County. It's very important. Okay, the third item of new business is a budget amendment. Julie?
The budget amendment you have in front of you is $1,125, and this reflects the amount that you just approved for those employees that are 100% funded by the county.
Okay. Entertain a motion, then, that the budget amendment as presented be approved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Janice, thank you. Okay, the fourth item of new business is a request for approval of the resolution in support of the EPA brownfield grant for a countywide assessment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope I had a good weekend. Each year, the Environmental Protection Agency awards grants for assessment, cleanup, and revolving loan fund. In 2016, 223 grants for all three types will be awarded in the amount of $54.5 million. 151 of those grants will be out of the assessment grants for $34.1 million. The application that we are making on behalf of the county and the four towns, which will be Clyde, Canton, Maggie Valley, and Waynesville, are forming a coalition group under this grant resolution for this assessment grant. So, the assessment grants, there's a $600,000 threshold there that the county and the four entities would be entitled to, to go out and assess properties for potential brownfield environmental concerns. And a brownfield is defined as real estate or real property, the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by the presence of, or potential presence of hazardous substance, pollutants, contaminants, controlled substances, petroleum or petroleum products, or is mine scarred land. And that's the EPA definition of the brownfield. We are seeking participants on a voluntary basis. This is not any kind of government where we go out and say, this, your property is contaminated, we are going to assess it, and then you could be potentially liable for any fines. This is a voluntarily inclusion grant. The county, on our side, we are looking, we are going to submit the hospital as part of the grant. The town of Maggie has identified a project there. The town of Waynesville has identified a project, and all of these, again, are voluntary. These are not just arbitrary. We decide that this property over here is contaminated, so we are, the towns are working with their folks and their entities to get the memorandums where the folks, the EPA folks can come and assess these as well, too. And in Haywood County, we've had, you know, a very large success with brownfield grants. If you may remember, when the county and the town, back several years ago, agreed to purchase the Daco facility, that was considered a brownfield at that time as well, too. And for some of you that may have been on the board, you know, I headed up that group there, that we put the town and the county together through the EDC to purchase that property. And recently, the Belk side of that just sold for $14.5 million. So, that's a great brownfield success story. Yeah, we'd like to still have a factory up there with lots of jobs, but this is the way that this is trending now. So, before you have the resolution there, that will include, it's inclusive of the county being included into the coalition, the towns have passed theirs, Clyde will pass theirs this week as well, and then we will submit the grant in mid-December, and hopefully hear something back around the first quarter of 2016. So, before you have that resolution.
Any questions of David? There's been several news articles about it, and it's being talked about at the other, our local governing entities in the-
Yeah, we had a meeting with the council governments before last month, and reviewed this as well. We're working with a consultant out of Florida and Alabama, PPM, who have years of experience in doing this, and so having somebody hold our hand along the way, too, is very helpful. Okay. It's a rather thick document.
If there's no questions of David, we'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution in support of the EPA brownfield grant for countywide assessment.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Janice, thank you, David.
Thank you. They're doing this too long.
Okay, next up is the fifth item of new business, which is the 2016 meeting and holiday schedule. Ira?
Yes, for the calendar year 2016, you have before you the meeting and holiday schedule. Again, it holds to your tradition of having your commissioner meetings on Mondays, the first meeting of the month at 9:00 a.m., and the second at 5:30, with a couple of notable exceptions, those being the days that holidays fall on Mondays. The dates are listed on the schedule. And the other, the other change is that often we schedule the July 4th meeting and then cancel it, and this year, we have, it's going to be easier to just schedule an additional meeting if we need it. We have scheduled additional meetings, usually in June around the budget time, and when needed. So, those are the key changes that you'll note.
This schedule is for meetings of regular business, and there can be items, of course, that come up that would require a special call meeting. We've done that in the past, and we can, of course, do it in the future.
Correct.
So, any questions or observations regarding the schedule? If not, then we'd entertain a motion that the 2016 meeting and holiday schedule as presented be approved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Janice, thank you. We'll continue with Ira for the final business of our new business, which is an appointment of one member to the Recreation Advisory Board. Ira?
Yes, this is for appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board. The board reviewed the applications at one of their regularly scheduled meetings and recommended that Kevin Fitzgerald be appointed to their board.
Kirk serves as our representative on that board. Kirk, do you have any observation?
Did this end up being the only application?
My understanding is that the only timely, fully timely one. There was, there were two put in front of the board that night, and they did have a chance to review.
Yeah, we had a discussion about one, and also it might have been that they were attempting to apply for a town position instead of a county position, the way their notations were, so I just, I wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
That this is the one that was put forward-
This is the one that was, I mean, that we would recommend, yes.
Yes.
Any questions or observations? If not, we'd entertain a motion that Kevin Fitzgerald be appointed as a member of the Recreation Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Janice, thank you. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. At this point, I would entertain a motion that we enter into closed session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege, 143-318.11A3, and economic development, 143-318.11A4.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Janice, I do not anticipate- You have returned from closed session. Is there any other business for the board? If not, we'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Third?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Janice, thank you, we adjourn.